At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for March 27th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk Deaton, could you please let the roll call show all council members are present? And we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, March 13th, 2023. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the minutes. I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no bills this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda includes Kiwanis Easter egg scramble, Memorial Day Parade, Lake Street Cruisin' 2023, and Motor Fest 2023. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I move the mayor's consent agenda as presented. I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Now we get to have some fun. Tonight, we have a proclamation honoring one of our longtime small businesses and families in the community, and I will get us started here. Proclamation from Office of the Mayor, whereas 2023 marks a milestone for Norm's Total Automotive, celebrating their 42nd year in the city of South Lyon. Whereas, Norm's Total Automotive was incorporated in 1981, and whereas, Norm's Total Automotive has been rated one of the best auto repair shops in the area and has been meeting the needs of car owners in the South Lyon community. And whereas, Norm's Total Automotive has been an important, caring part of the community, contributing to many causes and needs without hesitation. And whereas, the owner of Norm's Total Automotive, Norm Foltz, has served on the South Lyon DDA board, and now, therefore I, Daniel L. Pelchat, Mayor of the City of South Lyon, on behalf of the city council and the entire community, offer congratulations to Norm's Total Automotive as they celebrate 42 years in business and wish them many more years of success. At this time, we are going to open the floor for public comment, in case anyone had anything to comment on the consent agenda or Norm's proclamation, but I'm going to give Norm and his family the opportunity to speak first.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
If you want to just take it out of there, Norm, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate this 1,000 percent. This is where I grew up. My whole, my family's been here. My grandfather had a gas station at the, where the Old Rock parking lot was in 1950s, 5056. So it's just wonderful to get the appreciation. A service business, it's long hours, many, and it's, there's one emergency every day and you just got to try and deal with that. So, given that, you couldn't do that without a wonderful family, which is behind me. I had two sons, five grandkids, great daughter-in-laws. You know, my wife, you got to be able, they got to be able, willing to let you put in those hours to make it all work. So, it's been a real happy life. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, the more traditional opening of the public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please be aware of our two-minute time limit as well.
Hello, council. I'm Mr. Mayor Carl Richards, 390 Lenox. I want to go as fast as I can and cover as many little topics as I can. First up, we're going to be losing a very important member of our team next month, at the end of next month. Mr. Doug Varney is resigning. And I don't want to go into the details. Someone else will be talking about that later on in the meeting. Okay, if you recall, number two, if you recall in last month's meeting, or last meeting we had, I mentioned that there were five major blockages in Yurkis Drain from the previous storm, okay? Now, the county came in and fixed that. They came in and cleaned it. And I didn't call them. I used to do that, okay? Call the county drain commission and tell them what the situation was. And the nearest I could find out, nobody from the administration did either. It was just our regular rotation. Not only did they get Yurkis, which contains the most water of all the four, but they got the Sayer, the Underhill, and the Walker Drain on the north side. Which is amazing. They must have had three crews to get it all. And on the east side of McMunn Street, where the grating was terrifically blocked, they took all the wood with them. But on the, on the west side, where they cleaned it out, all the debris, as is usual, they threw it on the bank. And that doubled the debris on our side. If any of you ever happened to go walk down there, you'll see it. It's, I consider it unsightly. It needs to be fixed. And I would reiterate what I said the last time. Maybe we ought to look at a budget amendment, because as much as I appreciate and admire our DPW, and they said they're going to keep at it, I think they're going to need some help. Okay, thank you very much. We'll check the last one later.
Okay, sounds good, Mr. Richards. Thank you. All right, if we don't have anyone else for public comment, we're going to move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. First of all, I want to say, congrats to Norm. Forty-two years, that's a long time in the community, being around fixing a lot of cars. So, you must be doing something right if you've been here for 42 years. Getting more into the, into the discussion of downtown, I've spoken with Jodi Abella, the, what are they called? I guess the, the home furnishing store that's going to be going into KV Sports. Working on getting a ribbon cutting set up with them. They've indicated to me that they're going to be opening sometime in April. So that's going to be another great addition to the downtown, to that block, with Duovino opening up, some activity at the theater a little bit, and then Jodi Abella going in there too. It's going to be a nice lift for the downtown. We've got the electric vehicle charging stations, a quick update on those. We've gotten the amended contract language back, or sorry, it's gone back and forth two or three times now, but it's in their hands. They're working on it. Hopefully, the changes that were made are agreeable, and then we can continue moving forward with the project. The winter farmers market, there's going to be another one this weekend. There was one this past weekend, so there are three left for the month of April. Then we'll get into the outdoor market in May, but the dates for the winter market are the first, which is this Saturday, the 15th, and the 29th. So we have three indoor markets left for the season, then the outdoor farmers market begins on Saturday, May 6th, and that will be taking place every Saturday, May through October. I think that's about it for me. Not a lot to report tonight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody.
Excellent. Councilmember Dill.
Thank you. I had a couple things. I can't remember, where did you say the chargers were going to go? I know you said it.
In the Well Street parking lot.
Okay. And you don't have any kind of timeframe on it or anything? I just had some people asking, so I just went there.
Not, I mean, it's, it depends on when we get the contract agreeable. It, I think it takes about a couple of weeks, two to three weeks after that, to get the chargers in.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure.
And wouldn't we decide on that, or did we decide like on a charge for that, or how that's going to work?
So the, yes, so the way that it will work is folks will be able to pull up to the charging station using an app. You pay for the time. It'll be maybe like a dollar an hour, probably, is what the recommendation from the vendor is. That just covers the administrative costs that we have for the charging stations and kind of helps pay for it, so.
Awesome. I can't remember my other thing, so I'm done.
All right, well, if it comes back to you, let me know.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Alex, go ahead.
Regarding the winter farmers markets, has there been much discussion as far as next year? Like, has the turnout been, you know, good enough that it would warrant it? Or any interest in continuing it next winter, or?
Yeah, definitely. It's been, it's been really good. We average, I would say, about 30 vendors, 30 to 35 vendors per winter market. So, I mean, it's, yeah, it's been successful. And I think it'll only grow in the next year. Like, if, you know, using our outdoor market as an example, Diana took over last year. She was able to grow it, but now with her in year two, we're having people from outside of the South Lyon area contacting her, wanting to be at the market, and she's kind of, I don't know, the word's getting out, and so people are wanting to come to South Lyon because they've heard that it's, that it, that it's good, and they want to be here. So, that's a nice problem to have.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Nate, any update on delivery of the trash can lids yet?
Yes, so I have spoken with the vendor, and they've told me that there's going to be a delay in them getting here. I don't know why, but yeah, that's the, the update on that, so.
They give you any ideas to how much of a delay, or?
Two to three, four weeks. I don't, they weren't really very up on it, but it was, it's a new company, I believe, because we used to use one company, and then they went out of business, so they referred me to another company, and yeah, that's where the lids are at.
The other question is, do you still have that subcommittee that you had as part of the DDA that's going to take care of straightening out the alleyway between Bob's and the 12 Kitchen Elves, going to dress that up like you guys did previously? Is that still going to happen this year?
Yes, I believe so. Yep.
Thanks.
I remember.
Oh, Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to know, I was sad to hear about the jewelry store, and just wondered if you had an update on that. I know there was a question about Mandy, maybe Sponge Sugar taking it over, or?
Yeah, I've spoken with, with that property owner, and at this time, it doesn't seem like they're going to be going in there.
Okay.
That's what they've indicated to me. Maybe we'll have some more discussions, and hopefully, I'll try and convince, convince her to come downtown, because it would be a great addition, so.
And you don't, I know you said there's some activity at the theater, but no specific update on that?
No, I don't have a specific update on that.
And then George moving over to the new place, any update on when that'll happen?
That's supposed to open sometime in the spring. I don't have a firm date for them yet either, but they said spring of this year, so.
That'd be great additions, yep. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Onto the fire chief report with Chief Thorington.
All right, good evening. So I don't have a whole lot to say either. We're at 339 incidences for this year up to the council meeting. It's been a pretty busy spring. We did have a power line down on West Crest Lane today, at Oak Tree, between new construction and old construction, fell down, broke a power pole, took down a couple primaries and the secondary.
Wow.
And some communication lines. DTE was out there pretty quick this time, so it was a nice, it was isolated incident out of storm, which helped, but. And then last, good news, our truck is in Grayling, Michigan. We had the trip this time, no accidents. It should be up there for the next month or so, getting sticker, radios, doing a few alterations to fit the equipment for like shelving and things like that, but it's in the, in the process. So hopefully by, I'm shooting for May 1st, it will be here before our open house on May 20th. That's the goal.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
All right. Anyone got anything for Chief Thorington? Excellent. Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you.
Police chief report with Chief Baki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Norm. Many years of service. I've known him for a long time, and congratulations, that's awesome. Just a couple things I got. Our truck is going to be, hopefully get their decals next week, and hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have it on the road. And then I'm still trying to find our Explorer that we ordered twice now, a 22 and then a 23. I had a line on a few individuals I spoke with to get the vehicle. Of course, nothing's panned out yet, so we're still waiting for that. And that's pretty much all I got for right now. More questions?
Anyone got anything for chief? All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business, 2023, 2024 city budget.
Thanks, Mayor. City council, I've presented you with the draft South Lyon budget for the 23, 24 budget year. This budget was prepared based upon council recommendations, staff input, and review of the needs of departments and the community. The preliminary numbers are reflective of expected revenues based upon taxable values provided by Oakland County equalization and the proposed millages. We will hold a budget work session on Wednesday, April 5th, at 6:00 PM in the South Conference in Mid-City Hall to go over the draft budget. Material attached, all of you have a copy of that particular budget right in front of you this evening, and that's all I have for that item, Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Speaking of the, of the budget a little bit, do you have some numbers? Have the bonds gone to sale yet?
Yes. Patricia, do you want to speak on those?
Good evening. So the bond purchase was completed in February.
Yep.
And so right now, the funding is sitting in a bank account that we set up for it specifically. We have utilized some expenditures, some for the bond sale, the use of having the finance consultant, as well as our lawyers, our bond lawyers, Miller Canfield, and things like that, some of the fees that we had to pay to process the paperwork with the state of Michigan. But for that, other than that, Huntington Securities, whom purchased the bonds, had sent out about a week ago, I have the schedule finally, for paying back principal and interest, which I'll be providing at the budget meeting on the 5th, that we can answer any questions at that time. But other than that, we do have the initial budget set up for what we'll be calling municipal streets, which will be tied specifically to those bond funds, as well as then the property tax revenue that'll come in from the voter-approved millage.
Well, with respect to the first, because there's, as I recall, there's two sales. I mean, this was the first one?
This is the initial one. This will be for the next three years, and then we'll have another.
Do you know what your total revenue was?
It was a little over 8.8 million.
Okay, 8.8. Do you know what the interest rate was?
That I'll have to look up, because I just got that paperwork from Huntington, so I apologize, I don't have that.
Okay. All right, that I just wanted to know.
Sure. But I will have that for April 5th.
Yeah, I am a little interested in knowing what that interest rate was. You know, that's inverse relationship between the interest rate and the price of the bond, so.
Absolutely.
You know, so, but anyway. And additionally, I'm going to bring it up in the broad issue, because it sort of deals with a little bit of budget. I was looking at the, and the whole, the reason I was looking at the city charter had to do with the banking issue that we had several weeks ago. And wanted to know whether or not our city charter, what had sufficient language in it, or whether or not it needed to be amended to provide increased opportunities for banking, to move money maybe out of a local bank into maybe a more substantially backed bank, should there be a financial crisis. I think probably back when the charter was drafted, that was probably not a concern, but now, I think we're in a very different climate. And just thought maybe we should start taking a look at that charter to give you as many financial options as possible to move money a little bit, should there be a problem. Because, you know what, you got to look at the trends in banking. I mean, that's another thing, you know? If you follow the trends in banking, local banking is not as dominant as it used to be. It's the larger banks, you know, whether you like it or not, you got to watch the trend a little bit. And you just wonder if, if eight years or five years, you know, some of the local banks that we're doing business with, are they even going to be here? Some banks are actually going to virtual banking, which you will not even be able to walk in and see a teller. I think one is happening here in town. You're aware?
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay. So you won't even be able to bank at a bank anymore. So the, it's changing, and just kind of thought we'd get it out there and start thinking about it. It's not, not an emergency, but maybe in the next couple of years, we take a look at that, see how we move out of this banking crisis, if, whether the regional banks are able to hold on, but if they're not. But I do find it interesting that it was Huntington Securities that purchased the first bond.
Yes. We had eight bidders, is that correct, Paul? Yes, we had eight. They were the, the best of the eight that was selected.
You know who the other ones were?
We can provide that list if you'd like, yes. So we have that. I don't remember them off the top of my head. But, but as for review of the charter banking language, we absolutely can do that, but Lisa and I have been working for the last three weeks, looking at all of our banking options, even before the crisis kind of hit the news, looking at more diversification with our funding because of the amount of resources that we have. We did, council did approve and updated investment policy a couple of years ago, that we've been actively, you know, working with Oakland County to participate in their local government investment program, so we will be depositing some funds in that this year. We will be looking at doing some more diversification of the funds that we have within our local banks, and other banking opportunities that might be out there. So we are trying to stay ahead of the game from that perspective.
Well, I think that's one of the, the good things that this council has done, is they have put things in place so that if you needed to go to them, you have the tools.
Yes.
It would be a little bit difficult to sit here and negotiate an investment policy under these circumstances, so it's good to know that that policy was in place several years ago, so that you could go to it right away, so. Okay, thank you. You've been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Move on to new business number two, opioid settlement resolution.
After several years of negotiation, the nationwide settlement related to the distribution and sale of opioids have been reached against two national pharmacies, CVS and Walmart, and against two pharmaceutical companies, Tiva Pharmaceuticals Industries and ABB VIE Allergen. These two settlements are in addition to the settlements previously approved by, in 2021, with McKeeson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated and its parents' company, Johnson &amp; Johnson. The settlements require companies to pay up to $16.5 billion over 13 years. The city of South Lyon is eligible to participate in the settlements. Items I've attached for you tonight is a resolution approving the opting in to the National Opioid Litigation Settlement and Exhibit E, List of Opioid Remediation Uses. Possible course of action tonight, are approve or not approve the resolution opting in to the National Opioid Litigation Settlement with CVS, Walmart, Tiva, and Allergen. Suggested motion is attached.
Councilmember Dill.
Thank you. I just wondered if, in your opinion, there's any reason not to opt in?
I can't think of any right now, at all. I mean, we've discussed this probably the last year and a half, and the municipalities have all, have all decided that it's in the benefit, potentially, for their residents. It's really just going to be determined later on about how we're going to potentially use those funds, and those are outlined within this agreement.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hanson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution opting in to the National Opioid Litigation Settlement with CVS, Walmart, Tiva, and Allergen.
A second. Motion by Councilmember Hanson, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. I know we're getting a little redundant here, but we'll move on to the budget again. Anyone? Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit.
Carl Richards again. I'd love to expand on some of the previous items, but it's probably best I don't. To get on to the happy event that we're going to be sharing in the month of April, I want to let you know that the barn committee has made a commitment on the Roper Barn out on Pontiac Trail. And it's done with a contract, and they've, they've hired and engaged a professional service company that is experienced, and they're going to dismantle that barn, okay? That means noting it, labeling it piece by piece. And they've made arrangements with the tube mill to store it, the whole, whole agenda in the tube mill, until it's such time as they're going to reassemble it in McCady Park. And the site has already been noted on the grass east of the garden. Anyway, I thought if I didn't tell you, you wouldn't know. And so I thought that was happy news. It starts after the 1st of April, okay, which is this, end of this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. All right, if we have no other public comment, we will move on to the manager's report this evening.
Thanks, Mayor. City staff has been working on a more efficient way to handle the collection of brush discarded at the curb by residents. This would allow the crew to pick up debris in specific areas at specific times during the, during each month, excluding, of course, severe weather-related events. I'll be providing city council a copy of the policy within the next few weeks. All of you have a copy of the budget. Reminder, we do have that meeting on April 5th at 6:00 PM. Project Big Status, the Haggadorn Road Sanitation Sewer Projects, the bids will be opening on March 29th, and the Trailway Project will be, bids will be opening on March 30th. The Oakland County Transit Millage, the mysterious and southwest part of the county, continuing to meet to discuss creating the consortium of the purpose of providing and managing safe transportation for residents and members of the community. I provided you a copy of that potential preliminary consortium agreement for your review. We'll be discussing it at a future city council meeting. Our 150th anniversary celebrations continue. We're still reviewing opportunities and partnerships to which we'll be celebrating the 150th anniversary of South Lyon. We have received 150 anniversary logo stickers, which are being placed on various buildings, as well as city vehicles. You also see the logo on all, city letterhead and letters that are going to be going out. We've also had discussions with the local company regarding providing city banners with 150th anniversary. Grants, we have submitted grants to receive funds through Representative Slotkin's office for foyer department equipment, as well as for Lafayette Park. We've continued to provide additional information. We were informed last month that our submittals have passed the first round of approval, and we submitted follow-up information for part of the review process, and we await final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any council members may have.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Paul, you want to share with the, the council the good news from SEMCOG?
Well, we have received a notification that there are $600,000 worth of lighting, and streetlight improvements are going to be taking place within the city of South Lyon. I believe that is for the 2025 year. So those locations are going to be along Pontiac Trail. That will be at 10 Mile, it'll be at Reynolds Suite, and it will also be, I believe it was at Marjory End was the other location.
McCady.
McCady, I'm sorry, McCady, location. That'll be part of the 2025 year. We'll also coordinate with them the road improvements that are planned for Pontiac Trail, which will be the following year, 2025-26 budget year, which will mostly take place in 2026. Those improvements are, were just one of several communities that did receive them within Oakland County for that particular year, but it is a reward of approximately $600,000. And I believe Steve Kenny was instrumental in securing part of that, as well as the discussions with SEMCOG. But their new, their new type of pole or extended arms that go over the intersection, and not all the type of hanging lights that you see by wires. So are the new types of reflection, reflective lights, up to the new standards that are designated, you know, through, through the federal government. So it will be a definitely improvement for that, those particular intersections.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I had several questions, real quick. Where, what is the status of rebuilding that bridge over in Oak Creek?
That went out for review through our engineers, as well as through the state of Michigan in relationship to the permits that are required for that. So as was recommended by city council at one of the prior meetings, we did discuss regarding ARPA funds, and you'll see within this year's budget that is out there for, to be repaired this coming year, within this coming year's budget, as well as the location that was the wooden bridge that is south of Michigan Seamless Tube.
Okay, do you, I, I guess I don't understand why you're waiting for ARPA funds for this when you have money in the general fund to get it done now, so that people can take advantage of it this spring?
Well, we don't have to wait for the ARPA funds. We already have the ARPA funds. We're waiting for approvals through the state of Michigan in relationship to permits, as well as the design as well.
Okay. Any way to possibly push that a little bit, so that, that bridge is completed by Memorial Weekend? Weekend?
That will not happen. It's months to construct, so that, I continue to work with our engineers, as well as the state, you know, for that permit process to get that type of bridge actually done.
When was the last time you spoke with the state?
HRC's been speaking with the state, but I spoke with our engineers about it just last week.
Okay, all right. Also, do you have an update, or could you get an update regarding that picnic table that was on order for Paul Baker Park last year? I know the last time we spoke with Jeff about it last summer, it was on order, it was a couple of weeks behind, couple of weeks behind. We thought it would get in by October, and so I would hope that it would be in by now.
I will check to see if it has come in yet or not.
Okay, that would be great. And I also just, I'm sure everybody saw this, is the $19 million Recreation and Wellness Center that's going into Redford Township, and it was very interesting reading the article on how they patched that funding together, and a lot of it came from ARPA, so, very, very impressive article. Redford's gonna get a great community center, but that's an ARPA project, so just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Anyone else got anything for Paul tonight? Fantastic. Move on to council comments this evening, and Councilwoman Kenny, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize four individuals from the South Lion Fire Department who recently separated from the department. First, I want to recognize firefighter Stephanie Ship, who joined the department when Chief Kennedy was in charge, left for a while, and returned for about a year, and then left again this month. Next, I want to recognize firefighter Will Madsen, who spent almost six years with the department as a paid-on-call firefighter, and also departed earlier this year. Next, I want to recognize Lieutenant Tim Wilson. Tim was with the department for almost 22 years. He began his career as a firefighter, rose through the ranks to sergeant, and then to lieutenant. He was named firefighter of the year in 2005, and he served as the project manager for station improvements and Oakland County radio upgrades. And finally, I want to recognize Deputy Chief Mike Weir. Mike was with the South Lion Fire Department for almost 20 years. He began his career as a firefighter, rose through the ranks to serve as the fire inspector, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, and also served as the interim fire chief. Throughout his career, Mike received numerous lifesaving awards and letters of recognition, including 10 special recognition awards and unit citations. He was instrumental in writing and securing numerous grants for the department during his years of service, and he managed several projects for the department as well. He instituted the Smoke Alarm and Carbon Monoxide Alarm Program, in which the South Lion Fire Department provides and installs the units free of charge for city residents. He managed taking over the city hydrants for inspection, testing, and maintenance, and he served on the design committees for both Engine 7-2 and Engine 7-1. And finally, Mike was the project manager for the new ladder truck, Ladder 7-1, that we've heard so much about, and we anticipate arriving on May 1st this year. So I want to recognize these four individuals for their years of service, and in some cases, decades of service, protecting the residents and businesses of our city and the surrounding community. Their knowledge, experience, dedication, and love of our city will be deeply missed. So tonight, I want to thank them for their service, and wish each of them the very best for their futures. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Mosher?
I'm good.
Councilmember Kibble?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of actually act on the backside of what Steve had talked about. I'm sort of at a loss about how city council never received notice of Weir's being fired, and it was kinda couched as being that he had stepped away, but he told me that he did not resign about, from the department.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. The, point of order. Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order is, I don't know if employee personnel matters should be a matter of public discussion.
I'm gonna use my favorite crutch, the city attorney. Your thoughts on that?
I wasn't privy to the discussions, because if it was through my office, it would have been the Labor Council and the Board of Representatives.
Correct. Right. Okay. Okay. Councilmember Kibble, if you have anything else to touch on, maybe that's something we can discuss at City Hall some other time.
The idea that City Hall, or that the city council never was notified about this taking place is bizarre to me. This is somebody that's given over 20 years of his career to this city, and he's been dismissed like that? That's just crazy. I don't understand, especially when it's, this is couched in a regular...
Councilmember Kibble, we're trying to, you know, we've taken advice on behalf of the city attorney at this point.
Okay, so I'm not talking about Weir now. I'm talking about this, the whole idea of what this boils down to. We routinely listen to the, how hard it is for us to end up retaining and recruiting people to be in the fire department, and this is the kind of thing that makes it very difficult for me to see us being successful in trying to draw people into our force. I mean, you have, I can tell you quite honestly that Tim Wilson is gone because of what happened to Mike, so that's problematic. So I look forward to finding out exactly what the real story was, but this is very disappointing.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, to the fire chief, I want to thank you for a great job that you're doing over in the fire department. Any vacancies over there have been filled, and you're doing a great job, you're well-respected, and I want to thank you for your incredible commitment that you make to the city and to the residents. Next, I would also like to thank everyone who attended the opening night of the Culture Arts Commission with their first show of the year called Quilts and Fiber Arts Exhibition. I just wanted to let everybody know that a individual donated 10 quilts. She did not want her name known, and she asked that the quilts be sold and the proceeds donated to Safe House in Ann Arbor. As of tonight, over $1,100 has been raised for the Safe House in Ann Arbor, and I want to thank all the people that donated, particularly a vendor, contractor here in the city of South Lion, who very generously gave an incredible donation last Friday. So thank you to him, and thank you to all the other individuals that have come forward and have donated that money. And we have a great Culture Arts Commission. This just came up. They weren't looking for it, and somebody said, hey, I do quilts, I'll donate, but if you could just donate the money, that would be super. Additionally, Linda Ross has a great needlepoint back there, and anybody who knows Linda, she's so proud of it, so please thank Linda for her exhibition that is back there also. Also, don't forget the fish fries on Friday night. We're still selling out fish fries at St. Joe's Church, so you got a couple more Fridays to go, so please stop by. Speaking of St. Joe's, the Knights of Columbus will be out this weekend for their annual Tootsie Roll Drive. And what that really is, it's an opportunity for the Knights of Columbus to go out into the community and collect money that then is given to a charity that deals with children who are mentally challenged. So please, you'll see the Knights all out there in the city, beginning Friday, including Saturday and Sunday. Please donate, even if it's a dollar or two, it goes a long way. And I also want to thank our good friends, Charles Duty at Aubrey's. He too is gonna support 20% of any meal that you have on April 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and the proceeds will go to the Knights of Columbus to support, once again, that drive for the mentally challenged individuals. And of course, there are so many egg scrambles that are going on in the area. I know I, for one, am gonna be at a location on Wednesday stuffing eggs, but there are more egg scrambles going on. Please don't miss the Kiwanis Easter Egg Scramble, April 8th, Volunteer Park. Scramble starts at noon. I work it every year, and it's absolutely incredible. So have a great spring. We're almost there, everybody. We just gotta get to April, just a couple more days. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kurtzwell. Councilmember Hanson?
I just had a few things to remind everyone about, about some events coming up here. On April 23rd, we've got the 19th Annual South Lion Creek Cleanup, sponsored by the South Lion Boy Scout Troop 228, Michigan Seamless Tube, and Vibe Credit Union, as well as the South Lion Utilities Department. It's gonna take place that Sunday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so looking forward to seeing a lot of folks out there. Also in April, on April 28th, Friday, in the morning, we've got the Salem South Lion Library District Smart Money Kids Reading Program. It's a great event for kids to kind of hear some great stories about fiscal responsibility, as well as to learn about money, and it's a great opportunity for young kids to get out and meet other kids in the community, as well as to hear some cool stories read by maybe even me. I don't know, we'll see. Also, Memorial Day, our Memorial Day Parade is happening on May 30th at 9:00 AM, and, you know, parade folks that are participating in the parade will start lining up around 8:00 AM at Bartlett Elementary School. They are still looking for folks interested in taking part in the parade, so definitely reach out as far as, if you have any interest on that. And finally, to put it on everybody's radar way into the summer, when it's much warmer, on Wednesday, June 14th, at 11:00 AM at the Salem South Lion Library, we've got the Touch a Truck event, Daniel event, with hopefully even our new fire truck maybe being there, I don't know, we'll see. But kids have a great, a great event where they get to get into these trucks, into these utility vehicles, and dump trucks and stuff, and get to see it up close, and kids have a lot of time, a lot of fun, and usually we've got a pretty good turnout, and hopefully we have good weather this year, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. I first wanted to say congratulations and thank you to Norm for all of your support of the city, and all that you do for us. I really appreciate that. I also wanted to mention that Blessings in a Backpack, if you don't know who they are, they call themselves Neighbors Helping Neighbors. They do weekend food delivery, and in the summer, they do delivery for kids who are on the free lunch programs and other families in need, and they are having their golf outing on June 3rd, and they are in need of sponsors and golfers. So if you are able to do that, that would be helpful, and they also are looking for drivers, especially as the summer rolls around, they need people to deliver food. So I know that they would appreciate that, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dill. Spring break this week, so keep your eyes out for the kids out there running around. I was, it's always a fun time of year, right, where we got a couple of those snow days towards the end of the week. I was in my seasonal trip to the elementary schools to see our youngsters there. There were some good questions this year. In fact, some of them, I mean, they've been studying up. They were, you know, they were asking me about our, what version of Robert's Rules of Order we use up here. I said, we use the mayor's custom versions. But, no, it was very impressive, and so, that's always a thrill. I got a couple I gotta make up still because of snow days, so we're having some fun with that. Obviously, the weather's getting better. Obviously, we've got the extra hour of light, that's fantastic, and so I think just really excited for the community to come out and celebrate our 150th birthday of the community. I want to thank Norm and the Foltz family for being here. Norm's the man. I mean, there was probably, I can't imagine it, because I was probably too young, or maybe not even here yet, so kudos to you, Norm, but I gotta imagine at some sort of point in time that Norm had worked on everyone's car in this town. And so I'm thankful for the city staff for helping me and our council be able to honor these families, you know, the Shauermans, the Fagans, and the Foltzes, I mean, are names that you hear around here for decades, so, so thank you to you guys, and for many more years, you know, I'll be in there asking about my car forever, so. But with that, I think I'll look for a motion to adjourn tonight. Councilwoman Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn?
Thanks, all. Have a great night.